I'll call the meeting to order and have Tammy call roll.
Hirsch? Kittleson?
Here.
Swadley?
Here.
Orsma?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Mieske?
Here.
Engelberger?
Here.
Here.
Truel?
Here.
O'Connor and Bartlett are excused.
And older person Hirsch did indicate that she may be a few minutes late.
Okay.
She'll be coming this evening. Thank you. Communications from older persons this evening. Seeing none, I wanted to share with you all, as I did send you an email on it as well, but to share with our community that Dane County has announced a Stoughton Schools partnership. And I had met with Dane County about a year ago and talked about some mental health needs, not only that our community sees, but of course, what everyone is seeing and some things that need to be addressed. So what they have is that Dane County and the Stoughton Schools will each pay $63,000 for two mental health experts to serve four-year-old kindergarten through the eighth-grade students with immediate mental health needs. And the team will cost about $126,000 per school year and will serve four schools within the district, including River Bluff Middle School and the three elementary schools at Fox Prairie, Kigana, and Sand Hill. So that's one way that they can really focus on those students by proactively providing for their needs. That's a good service, I think, another good partnership. Other than that, I didn't have anything to share this evening. Catfish River Music Festival, for those of you that were there, and I know I saw quite a few folks there. Huge success. Little rain last night, but a huge success, or Sunday night, rather. Huge success before the rain came. All right, next on our agenda is a presentation from Attorney Dregney regarding the Fair Housing Act.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm addressing the Fair Housing Act this evening to make you aware of certain legal issues that can arise in the context of housing-related developments. I was prompted to address this issue in light of the riverfront development. I understand there has been some discussion regarding whether that development should or should not include affordable housing and whether that housing should be owner-occupied rather than renter-occupied. The Fair Housing Act is a federal law enacted as part of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. The law makes it unlawful to make unavailable or deny housing to any person because of race, color, disability, religion, sex, family status, or national origin. Municipal decisions, including but not necessarily limited to zoning decisions, can give rise to Fair Housing Act claims. Some Fair Housing Act claims are based on intentional discrimination. I have seen claims in Wisconsin where public officials have made statements about low-income housing or affordable housing that were then later used as evidence that there was intentional discrimination. Federal Housing Act, excuse me, Fair Housing Act claims can also be made where there's no evidence of intentional discrimination. These are called disparate impact claims. And under this type of claim, if a housing-related decision functions to exclude people in a protected class from a neighborhood, a municipality can be required to prove that its decision is based on a legitimate nondiscriminatory purpose. For example, if a municipality rejects a proposal to build a particular type of housing and a statistical analysis shows that the rejection has a disparate impact on a protected group, such as disabled people or people of color, the municipality may be put in a position where it would have to defend itself in a fair housing claim. We have examples of communities in Wisconsin that have faced fair housing claims, and I've been involved in one of those claims, where there were projects involving rejections of affordable housing or multifamily housing development proposals where there were unfortunate statements made during the process, not necessarily out of ill will, but statements that could then be used later to color the decision as a violation of the Affordable Housing Act, excuse me, the Fair Housing Act. So to risk, to reduce a risk of that kind of claim, I recommend being careful in the language that we use when discussing city objectives and concerns about development proposals and of course, in the policy decisions that the city makes. That's it.
Thank you. Questions? Older person Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Matt, is it appropriate to explore the possibility of locating affordable housing in different locations throughout the city?
It may well be appropriate to have as an objective of the city promoting the availability of affordable housing in different parts of the community. I think where I have more of a concern is if the city has a specific proposal in front of it for multifamily housing. If you look at an apartment building, one way to talk about that apartment building has nothing to do with who lives in it. It has to do with, well, is that an appropriate density for that neighborhood? Does it have any, do we have concerns about impacts on traffic? Things of that nature. As soon as you start changing the conversation to focus on the question of who lives in the apartment building based on characteristics such as income or disability or other factors, that's where I get concerned. So I'm not concerned about the city having a discussion at a policy level about how it can promote affordable housing in different parts of the community, but I do think it's important to be sensitive when looking at specific development proposals. If it's a multifamily proposal for development and the city's position is multifamily housing is fine there, you know, we're okay with multifamily housing there. Where I think you can put the city in a difficult position is when you start moving the discussion to, well, what kind of people are going to live in there? And that's where it gets to be challenging.
Let me ask you this. Is it appropriate for a planning commission or other bodies to ask developers whether this is full-market housing or affordable-market housing or whatever term people say?
It can be, but again, I think we need to be sensitive to why we're asking those questions and what we're going to do with the information we receive. For example, I have been involved in a number of projects where, you know, we've had extensive discussions about how much affordable housing is going to be included in a development. My client has actually participated in financing those units. That's not a problematic discussion. Where things can become challenging is, let's say, and I had this case, a developer says, "I'd like to build an apartment building," and the community says, "How do you plan to finance that?" "Oh, I'm going to use low-income tax credit financing." If the response to that is, "Well, we don't like that," because then there are going to be people who are low-income people living there. And so if that's the discussion, that's where you can get in trouble. And I've seen that case.
Older person Reeves?
And I think we can talk more about this when we talk about the comprehensive plan, but one of the amendments I would like to see is something specific when we talk about the implementation plan, because we don't have a specific section on housing and whether it's detailed planning or housing, but we do talk about implementing a balanced residential development policy, and I think that addresses those sorts of things as far as where the multifamily goes and how many, also the detailed design standards for multifamilies. So I think we can, I mean, that seems to me that that, because it's in our comprehensive plan, that we can talk about it within implementation plan? Is that?
And I don't see any concerns with that. That seems like an entirely appropriate kind of planning discussion about housing needs, how much multifamily do you need, where is it appropriate for that housing? I'm not concerned about that. I'm more concerned about a situation where you have a specific development proposal and the discussion shifts from what kind of housing is this to what kind of people are going to live in this housing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Older person Engelberger?
Well, I just wanted to say, I mean, we've had some discussions about this recently in the last few months, and, you know, I think the discussions have been around trying to possibly spread out the housing or finding a way to have some kind of a policy involved with affordable housing. And I don't think we've, anybody has crossed the line as far as, you know, trying to exclude from the community that type of housing. So hopefully, we can still have honest discussions and to try to have a, you know, make the city a better place to live for everybody.
Thank you. Older person Hirsch?
Right, on those, thank you for, on those lines, I think what I knew, some of the discussions were is how each of these housing developments can be inclusive as opposed to exclusive. And so it's not just, like you were saying, low-income housing, that how can we create development that includes all sectors instead of having a building designated as low-income housing, because that, to me, is not community-building? I want to see, and I think we've had this discussion in other committees, is how we can create an inclusive community, not an exclusive community. And so if I know what you're talking about, it's about being just the opposite of what people are taking the discussion is, is it's more about inclusivity, not exclusivity.
Thank you. Older person Johnson?
Thank you, and thank you, Attorney Dregney. I understand what you're saying. There's laws, and I think we've gone very close to the line. I think he's bringing this point up, that no matter what we're trying to do as far as having an honest discussion or what, being in real estate, you have to be very, very careful on how you present your comments, thoughts, and everything. So he's just giving us a heads-up that even though we have good intentions, or maybe not good intentions, he's just saying we're opening ourselves up for a lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Attorney Dregney. Public comment period this evening. We have one person registered, Laura Trotter. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Laura Trotter, the Director of the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight to talk about our 106, 2017, which is the special event licensing for the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce's Coffee Break Festival. This is going to be the 20th Annual Coffee Break Festival, so we're pretty excited about that. And I just wanted to invite the audience members at home and of course, the council members to attend the event on August 19th. It's a Saturday from 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock. We're excited that we are partnering with the Stoughton Sports Boosters Organization. They're going to bring their Viking Booster Truck to our event, so it's going to be a 5K as part of our festival. Of course, there's coffee to drink, a pig roast, a car show, Bean Spit contest, so lots of family fun for everyone. If there are any questions, it's on your consent agenda, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we don't have any others registered to speak at the public comment, other than Mr. Vervolt reminded me that recent studies have indicated that at least three cups of coffee are good for you each day. Lots of tasting is available at the Coffee Break. All right, our consent agenda is the next item on the agenda tonight. It consists of the June 27th Common Council Minutes, the June 27th Joint Planning Commission and Common Council Minutes, Resolution 111, 2017, which is confirming my committee appointments of Mike Point, Nicholas, someone's going to have to help me with how to say his last name, Yuknis, and Mitch Bergerson to the Stoughton Tree Commission, Resolution 106 of 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license and special event license to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Hirsch, is there a second? Second. I'm sorry. Second by Jensen. Does any older person wish to remove an item from that consent agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to remove Resolution 106, 2017 from the consent and deal with that separately?
Yes, we'll, thank you, we'll address that under new business at the very beginning. Any other items to be removed? Seeing none? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Old business begins this evening with Resolution, I'm sorry, with Ordinance 7 of 2017 for a second reading for our planning commission. Older person Truel?
Thank you, Your Honor. Plan Commission brings forth Ordinance 7-2017, approving a general development plan for Outlets 1 and Lots 3 and 4, CSM Number 14057, and Lots 5 and 7, CSM Number 14058, as a part of the Kettle Park West Commercial Center, and I would move approval.
Motion by Truel, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Engelberger. Older person Truel?
Thank you, Your Honor. We talked briefly about this at the last meeting, but I'll turn it over to Rodney, perhaps to provide a little more background on what this is all about.
On the screen is actually the lots as depicted for changing the general development plan to cover Lots 3, 4, 5, and 7. Much of the discussion about the change is related to the fact previously, the large retail ordinance requirements covered all of these parcels included in this area under the general development plan for the entire area. The hope by the developer is to have these lots removed from those particular requirements. And I used an example of one of the reasons for that discussion was, in these conceptual layouts on these parcels, you can see Lot 4 has multiple buildings. In the event that there was a subdivision of one of these lots, you would not be able to have the pavement setbacks be met as shown here. So if there's a line that separated lots 4 in a fashion to do so, you would have to have a distance of four or five feet from either side of that lot line. This allows this parcel as a whole, Lot 4, for example, to be looked at for an inclusive layout related to parking, stormwater management, landscaping on its entirety as it is currently shown here. Again, that's a concept, but it's really, the rationale is to try to be able to look at these on an individual basis and not have the large retail ordinance requirements imposed upon them that would have been in place due to this large retail area. The developers here, if there's particular questions as well? So the lots that are shown here, 3, 4, 5, and 7 are the areas that are included as part of this new GDP proposal. Independently, parcels that would have to come back with a specific implementation plan would come before you, Planning Commission and Council. You will recognize there's been individual approvals for portions of some of these, portions of Lot 4. You've already acted on a portion of this lot and a portion of Lot 7 already. This particular lot, Lot 5, one of the original GDP indications was that this entire parcel was going to be a bank. The bank still intends to utilize a portion of this parcel, but this would allow for the opportunity for some additional use to be utilized on that parcel as well.
Thank you. Older person Mieske, and then Johnson.
Why is Outlet 1 included?
Outlet 1 may be a developable lot in the future. Currently serves as a stormwater management component right now as a temporary facility, but there is an opportunity possibly in the future that that could be. I think it's actually zoned institutional, though, so I don't think that allows for any future development, but it removes it from the overall GDP. I don't know if there's a particular reason it was put in. Outlet 2 is also included in this, so I don't know if there's a particular reason. Do you know if there's a reason Outlet 1 or 2 are in this GDP? Kevin?
Could you come to the microphone, please, Dennis? Thank you.
Will you show us where Lot 2 is also? Well, Lot 2?
Lot 2 is the large?
Walmart lot.
The large Walmart parcel. Outlet 2 is on the, it's at the end of this flag. This is the infiltration basin. For those that will remember, stormwater is actually pumped up to this infiltration basin, and that's part of that location. You can see on the area denoted here, it does indicate stormwater management pond, infiltration basin. So the long-term use of those is still intended to be stormwater management-related.
Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. The reason that what's included is included is more that we took out Lot 2, which is a Walmart lot, and Lot 6, which is a Cook-Trip lot. Otherwise, everything else is covered then with this amendment.
Thank you. Older person Johnson?
I'll pass.
Okay. Are there comments or questions? Council President Swadley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So Rodney, you had mentioned that by doing it this way, it wouldn't be, you know, subject to the same rules or whatever as the big box ordinance?
Would not be.
Okay, so is that something, maybe we need to take a look at the ordinance for any future developments?
I say we certainly should be looking at it. There are challenges with it. I'm not saying good or bad, there are just, there are issues that we bump up against frequently that on a smaller site, for example, may not be as relevant, and we need to have that candid discussion about what a large retail, for example, because of this area having the adjacent parcels, the large retail ordinance would have kicked in had this not been part of a GDP. So these smaller parcels would have had some of the same requirements that the large retailer would have had in place for a larger parking lot, for example. The size of Tree Islands and the cart corrals, and some of those things would have been imposed upon or potentially imposed upon these smaller sites, making it much more difficult to maybe develop those as intended.
So to follow up on that, where do you, what is the proper venue to begin that discussion?
Well, the Planning Commission, you know, certainly there's, there needs to be community interest in changing the zoning code and aspects of it. What we find as staff, the most difficult time to have those conversations is when there's a development before you. But honestly, that's probably the time you're first alerted to an issue that becomes apparent. Many portions of the zoning code don't get tickled until a particular development comes before you. And, you know, case in point, you have the city attorney working through the landmarks ordinances in the zoning code. Those things go undisturbed for many years because there hasn't been particular projects that may utilize those aspects of the code. But it's the more difficult time to have the conversation when there's a development before you because there's an appearance of treating a development special. And so we're trying to cautiously look at a calendar when that might be more appropriate for certain aspects of the zoning code to be reviewed.
Sure, and the reason I bring that up is for the reasons you just mentioned, and certainly, we've been through many different scenarios the last few years on different types of development, not just this one. And I think, you know, soon might be a good opportunity to reflect on that and see what some of the lessons and, you know, that were learned throughout the various processes that we've been through. So I certainly would be at least open to, you know, having that conversation if you think that it would be productive.
Maybe if I can just expand. Staff and commissioners on the council will recognize, staff brings zoning code suggestions to the Planning Commission as issues crop up that we try to address and work through with the commission. Those ordinance amendments are then held for a public hearing and then considered by the Planning Commission and the council for approval or not.
Thank you. Older person Engelberger, and then Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm supporting this, I support it at the Plan Commission. Normally, I question or am not real friendly with exceptions. This isn't really considered an exception, even though it may look like it. It's another way of zoning and doing our business. And I guess if we want to make changes that way, then we have to take a look at our zoning ordinances and amend them accordingly, but, you know, this is an appropriate way we can do business and, you know, we can take a stance that we're going to not allow development or we can take a stance that, you know, we're going to approve things per our ordinances. So I would recommend approval on this.
Thank you. Older person Johnson, and then Hirsch.
I agree with President Swadley that we do need to maybe, as well as with Rodney, to make some revisions and have things planned so that when development does come here, we don't go back to them and say after the fact, this is what we want, when it's not in ordinances. I had a friend recently traveled to Hilton-Hud, and they had a picture of a Walmart, and you couldn't even see that there was a Walmart from the road because they had so much vegetation and stuff like that. With the climate there, they more have to do it, but I think, you know, to play it fair for the developers, we also have to have something in place so they know when they're coming here, they have to do this. I will not be supporting this. I don't think any of you guys are surprised or in the community. I think it's very important that we follow what our constituents wanted, and the second district I am, and whether it's developed or not, my district voted no, no for TIP dollars and no for the development. So as older person of the second district, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Older person Hirsch?
Thank you. I just have a more technical question. On page 25, you have that map, and then on 26, you have another map, and that outlet thing is Outlet Number 2 on the one map, and it's Outlet Number 3 labeled on the second map. And I was wondering if that needs to be corrected? If that's the same outlet, because it looks like it, one's labeled 2 and one's labeled 3.
We can review whether that needs, if it's substantive or not, but essentially, it's depicting the same parcel of land. It's just, this one here is indicating a, an ownership. This Outlet 3 here.
Outlet 2 is just the right-of-way.
I think Outlet 2 is the?
It's the strip of, it's the flagpole.
It's a strip of land, a strip of land that runs north to south here.
Outlet 2A on the map on the previous page, that strip of right-of-way is considered Outlet 2A. So it does look like there was an error on one map or the other. This needs to be corrected.
Understood. Understood.
Alder Person Hirsch, you still had the floor?
Yes. I forgot my second question. But I, I believe that, I agree with President Swadley. We do need to revisit our ordinances and we're trying to do that through our CACP kind of group. You know, I don't see a problem with, if the less land is under parking lots, the better off we are. So I will support this because I don't want more parking lots when we could, especially in Lot number 3, when you have an existing wetland that's on that southern edge. I'd rather not see that disturbed and have that as intact as possible. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Any further comments? Otherwise, I have a motion by Alder Person Trul, second by Alder Person Engelberger to approve ordinance 7 of 2017. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
One ordinance passes with one no noted. Ordinance 6 of 2017 comes from our planning commission. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning commission brings forth ordinance 6-2017 and ordinance to adopt the amended comprehensive plan for the city of Stoughton. I would move approval.
So motion by Trul, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know that there are at least a couple folks that are looking to make possible amendments. And I would just encourage us to continue to move forward. And I look forward to some of the proposed suggestions to modify this.
Sure. Planning Director Scheel?
Not to, not to direct the discussion, but it might be worthy of highlighting the four items that were contained in the packet that we think are worthy of addition following the public hearing draft and recommendation that came out of planning commission. And I'll just quickly walk through the four because I think they're very straightforward. And I, I think it's easiest to do by map. 113 South Page Street, this actually is a multifamily parcel already. We believe the existing land use map and the future land use map should be changed to reflect that existing condition. The second item is related to Norseview Heights, the Arnett addition. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the overall development. You'll recall as a, as a council, you had acted on a preliminary plat for this region, north end of Page Street. And inherent in that is anticipated principally single-family parcels here with two, two twin family homes or duplex home location sites here and one in the corner here. We believe that your most recent action should be incorporated into this, this map to indicate those, that the desired land use mix there as described. In somewhat of addition to that, this is the very northern portion of Page Street at County Highway B. You'll recall that this area was designated or anticipated to be a, a group of duplex homes and was conceptually approved also by planning commission. So we think that that should be noted on the future land use map as well. The subsequent change that was also recommended by the landmarks commission is reflected in this memo as well. And you'll see the, the highlighted language or the colored, colored and stricken language on the appropriate pages here. So at a staff level, we'd, we'd hope that your action would include, including the memo that we've outlined, these recommended changes.
Alder Person Engelberger. Thank you Rodney. I'm sorry Scott.
I would defer to Scott first.
I would move an amendment in, as the items that Rodney just identified. They were, they can be found on page 3 of our packet. It's a memo dated to June 5th to the council. And so I would move the, that we include these changes as outlined by Rodney.
So motion by Trul, is there a second?
Second by Council President Swadley. I have just one quick question Rodney. On the map, and I may have seen wrong, but I think on the map that you were showing us on Page Street, it says 113 South Page. The memo indicates 116 South Page?
Whatever the correct address is, willing to. There is.
Don't look at the numbers that closely.
Sorry for the inconsistency. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll make that correction.
I think you're actually correct. I think it is 113, not 116.
I think so as well.
There's a motion by Trul, second by Council President Swadley to include the memo, the June 5th memo. Comments on that motion before we move further?
Is that an amendment or what is that considered?
It's an amendment right now.
It's an amendment to the original motion. There comments on that amendment to the original motion?
Yeah.
Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just, just a point of order. I, I thought that that was already voted on in part of this package.
I was curious.
Part of this resolute, or part of this ordinance change or resolution, whatever it's called?
Let's go to the resolution.
I thought it was, but I'm not sure. Is that right Rodney or not?
No.
Okay, so it does need to be included?
Yes.
So then I would, I would. I would.
It was recommended.
Recommend approval for that.
All those in favor of this amendment, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries, takes us back to the original motion on the floor. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to propose a, an amendment that we had talked about in concept in our last meeting and didn't have the exact language. And we tried to work it out, so we've got some exact language here to propose. And so I would propose an amendment to add the following to Comp Plan Chapter 8, Section B, and add a new F, which would state, "It is imperative that the city and city council work with the Stoughton School District and Stoughton School Board within the next two years to specifically discuss, address, and implement a plan that takes into consideration further growth analysis, improving housing options, job creation, marketing, addressing poverty trends, and declining enrollment issues of the school district. This plan should be reviewed annually thereafter to serve as an example of best practices in a joint effort to increase the quality of life of the community." Further amend to add the following to the Comp Plan, Chapter 8, Section B, under 8, which would be added after the first sentence. And that, that short sentence would include, implement as a policy as this, as described above in Chapter 8, Section B, F. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Engelberger, second by Trul.
I believe there was a little typo there in the word described, but.
Certainly.
That should be changed.
Okay. Thank you. Alder Person Borismo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question of Matt, if this is okay. When it says that it's imperative that we work with the school district on the, on the various items that the amendment talks about, is that, if we do that, are we stepping on school board issues? I just wondered if that, if, if we say it's imperative and somebody at school board doesn't believe it is imperative. I mean, is that, is it okay to, to write it in that kind of way or to have that in that kind of way?
Is it possible to put Chapter 8, Section BF up? I'm trying to see where this fits in the, within the plan.
I'm on it, right there.
Well, he's, oh, that was fast. You didn't give me, give me time to say that Michael Slavny is here to help us with our discussion.
So it'd be an additional objective?
Yeah.
And then, and then be, what's 8? Oh, it would be an 8.
I have to arrow down slightly.
So it's expressed as both a, an objective and then a policy goal of the city. So, well, I'm glad Mike Slavny is here as well because I'd be interested in his take on this. I don't believe that, I, I think including that is an expression of an objective and of a policy objective of the city. But I don't, it doesn't force the school district to do anything, first of all. It's expressing the city's belief that this is an important thing to do. I, I also don't believe that it is something that the city would then be, you know, if, if, for example, the city for some reason failed to follow through on this, there wouldn't be any legal consequences for that. It's an expression of your intentions, I think, but it's, it's not binding in my, in my view. Any different opinion on that?
I, I don't have a different opinion. I believe it is not binding. I believe the way that it's worded expresses a, a strong desire. Let me posit a slight alteration. If after the word city council at the beginning of the paragraph, if it said, "The city council be open to and then work with", I think the implication is a little more gentle. And I think it implies the recognition of a mutual issue rather than kind of perhaps implying that this is primarily a city issue. I think someone reading this could get that misimpression. I, I understand it is a high priority city issue. But I would agree with the city attorney that without school board participation, it, it doesn't go anywhere. So that would be, that would be my suggestion as a possible tweak to that language.
I'd be happy with that. Sure.
All right. We've just tweaked it. Did you get that, Tammy? Okay.
We have.
Accepted as well.
To be open to work with, right?
Yeah.
Open to working instead of working.
To working.
Working with instead of work with.
And Scott?
Yep, I agree.
You're still at the floor and then Alder Person Jensen.
And I raised that issue because I, I just don't want, I, I asked a question of Matt because I, I don't want, we're two, we're two totally separate entities and I, you know, I don't want to impose anything on the school board that they don't have a hand in.
Thank you. Alder Person Jensen and then Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Reading through this, I, I like what Mike's written here. I, I think it's, it's, it's a good idea. However, I don't know that it belongs in the Comp Plan. I would prefer to see this as a goal of the joint committee, of the school board council joint committee meetings. If we, I don't know, I don't think we've set up any goals, but I think that we should set up goals and this should be one of them.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, you know, I just think this is kind of a common sense solution to ask the school district to get involved. And, you know, we did have a joint meeting. And basically what the superintendent of schools said at that meeting was that he, his, if I remember his words fairly closely, he said, "I'm not an expert in development, so I, you know, take a hands-off approach basically to development." Well, I, I think there's a lot of ways that we as a council and the school district and school board as, as a board can find ways to work together, especially through gathering information and providing information about, so we can understand more about the district and how it works and how their funding works. And so we can work with them to try to help that situation along. This is just a, a common sense solution, in my opinion, that allows us to try to work with, with the district to make a better city. And of course, we can't tell the school board how to operate or what they're going to do. We can only hope that they work with us and that's kind of all we're asking here. I don't, I don't see it as a, I, I think the Comp Plan is a document that's bases, or for us to base how we, how we do development within the city. And this is just a guideline and this is an idea for that, towards that guideline. So I, I think it's something that's fairly important and I hope we can get everybody on board for this.
Thank you. Further comments? Alder Person Reeves?
I, I agree with Alder Person Engelberger that I think that we have talked about declining enrollment. I think that we need to talk about working together and collaborating. I don't think we can have a plan that is comprehensive, that doesn't include and mindfully work with and collaborate with the school district. I think that this should be our working document. And if it's not in there, I think it could fall by the wayside, so I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I think that's the important part of this. The section 8 for those folks, which is me chapter 8 for those folks at home, really is talking about intergovernmental relationships. And, and so that's where, you know, Alderman Engelber's proposal, I think, is well suited. I think the other part about this is a lot of the discussion we, we had during the course of the Comp Plan was again, the length of this document and our goals and what are we trying to do? And also making, just as we were just having this discussion about kind of relooking at the big box ordinance and things. Things change over time, but it's important for us to kind of plant the flag here that we, we do need this kind of intergovernmental relationship. We need to be talking back and forth. This plays back to the earlier discussion about having mixed-use housing across the city and having a balanced plan and looking for development. So we need to be having more court, and I applaud Alderman Swadley, President Swadley, for, for being the one who was kind of putting us together with, with the school board. It's important that we, we meet and we discuss. And I hope that they will in turn, if they have objectives, consider talking more to us as they're making their plans going forward. So I would encourage you to support this resolution or this amendment.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
Thank you. And I also agree that this should be included into the Comp Plan. I guess I'm also just looking at softer language instead of as it is imperative, can, as it is an objective. Shouldn't it just say, "The city and the city council will work with the school district in the next two years" instead of "it is imperative"? I mean, that's kind of harsh. But I like that it's regardless of what we decide to do wording-wise. I think it's great for it to be in a Comp Plan as a historical guidelines for, I don't know who's going to be on this committee in 10 years when we redo the Comp Plan or in next year when they're looking for guidance of what to like tackle. As a council, this provides guidance and I think that's what the Comp Plan does.
Thank you. Council President Swadley and then Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'll certainly support the amendment. And I, I do think it's important that it's in there for many of the reasons that's stated. What it does is it, it tells us before the joint meeting that we really do want to work with the school district. And if, if we approve the amendment, we can present that at the joint meeting and we can have a discussion of what that might look like. So I think that the point Alder Person Jensen made is a good one, that, that does need to be part of that discussion. And it needs to go, you know, beyond just our group that the school district needs to take it and then do what they can in their area of expertise. And, you know, my hope is that we won't be just limited to the city council and the school board. My hope would be that we'd be able to expand the conversation into the townships because many of the students in the school district come from the townships. And in order for us all to be successful, we do need to have a strong school district, whether you live in the city or in the town. And I think that's why it's important that it's in here. And to me, one of the biggest areas of opportunity in, in our, our comprehensive plan is to have items in there that have some meaningful content and that holds ourselves accountable. And that's one thing that I would say that the last plan had a lot of good information in it. And there were a few things that councils took action on, but not nearly enough. And I think this is one area that we really do need to take action on. And I think it's important that it's in there. And the way that Mike has written it, I think, really puts us in a position to actually get some things accomplished. So I'm really excited about this.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Hi. I agree with this, the feeling of this. But one of the things I'm concerned about is the last meeting that I went to. We were discussing, we need more housing and we need better this, better that. But I don't think. I don't think we can do this alone. I think we need, and I want some help on this, if we can put this in the comprehensive plan, I really do think we need a designated urban planner or business development person. Because when I went to that meeting, people were saying we need more jobs and stuff like that, and I don't, I'm sorry, but I don't have faith in this council. I'm very sorry to say that. But what I see is that we think that building retail stores, nursing homes, and hospitality is going to bring more people here to the city is wrong. I think we need jobs, to have people who can afford houses. So I understand we need to work with the school board and the city council, but I tell you the truth, from what I've seen, I don't think we're sophisticated enough to get a plan to get more jobs here, to bring people here. So I don't think we can sit together and talk about how we're going to deal with poverty and housing if we don't get jobs. So I would like if we could have something like in here, that we start working like as a plan, that somebody does this full-time, and take off some of the headaches from the staff as far as the urban planning part. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think what Alder Johnson is talking about is an economic development director, is that what you're talking about?
And have more somebody that's in charge of just the urban planning part of things, yes.
Which, I mean, our planning department is in charge of that, but, you know, the essence of what we've got here with this amendment is just exactly what you reiterated to with regard to trying to find other than low-wage service jobs within the community. I agree with the economic development director thing, and we've been talking about that for the last three or four years, and hopefully we're going to move toward that in the near future. I don't believe that that's something that needs to be stated in the comprehensive plan position. We don't have any other department heads listed in the plan here. But the exact meaning or where we're trying to get at with this amendment is to provide better opportunity to be brought into this city for a better quality of life. That's what this is all about. And, you know, we can do everything we want about trying to change the whole world with regard to how this country has gotten to where we've gotten as far as a low-wage service economy. That didn't happen here in Stoughton because of us. That's happened for the last 50 or 60 years over time, and we've gotten to that position. We can address what we can address within our own city, but, you know, we're going to need to do a lot more than something on a local level to address the problems that you're talking about there, Tass. And I totally agree with you, we need to change that, but we can't do that on a local level.
Okay. One quick comment, okay?
That's why I said that if we were going to have another meeting, the last time we got together, we were talking about poverty and all this other stuff, and we didn't have a plan in this meeting. And I said, "I didn't want to go to another meeting if we're going to sit there and do that again," because we cannot in ourselves plan, like I said before, change the poverty and stuff like this. For us to get together and do what we did the last time is, we're not doing anything.
It's...
I just think it's, I know what the vision is, but we don't have a plan, and we didn't even, we just went around in circles the last time. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's get, we'll bring our conversation back to the comprehensive plan, and I'm going to have Tammy read the motion that we have on the floor. This motion was made by Alder Person Engelberger and seconded by Alder Person Trul.
The motion by Engelberger to amend the comprehensive plan to add the following language to Chapter Eight, Section B-F, quotation, "It is imperative that the city and city council be open to working with the Stoughton School District and Stoughton School Board within the next two years to specifically discuss, address, and implement a plan that takes into consideration future growth analysis, improving housing options, job creation, marketing, addressing poverty trends, and declining enrollment issues of the school district. This plan should be reviewed annually thereafter to serve as an example of best practices in a joint effort to increase the quality of life of the community," end quote. Further amend to add to the comprehensive plan, Chapter Eight, Section B-8, add after the first sentence quotations, "Implement as a policy as described above in Chapter Eight, Section B-F," end quotes. Second by Trul.
All right.
I've got a question.
Sure. Alder Person Engelberger.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, by doing those things that are listed there, the initiative is to go over and above the Kettle Park West-type development that has been, that we've been doing, and move on to other things such as redevelopment, industrial development, things that are going to bring good-paying jobs to this community. That's the whole intent of this. So I hope Tass understands that this is doing exactly what she's looking for us to do.
All right. Further comments on the motion on the floor? Alder Person...
I do have one. Thank you, Your Honor. When we were talking about the comprehensive plan, I had some meetings with people from the townships, and there was a feeling, I think initially, that we may be working at cross purposes by having too much developmental land in the townships. And so, you know, I think it's, I think this is, I think this is actually very good. I think we also need to work with the townships as our president just talked about, you know, because that's their land we're talking about sometimes. And I think it's important that, I think this is a way to start, but I also think we need to include other people in this whole discussion, which specifically townships, which I think we don't want to be working at cross purposes with townships.
I do want to just remind folks, we did just finish our FUDA, the Future Urban Development Area, and that took, goodness, probably longer than it should have, a year and a half, maybe. And that did include the townships, talking about the future of all of our communities, you know, that future urban, what are the townships and the city, what should it look like? There were some really good exercises involved in the FUDA planning.
Your Honor, I mention it just because, because I think it's important, I think it's important that we, I think this is a good place to start because it's a school board who also represents various people in the townships as well, too. So, but I just want to mention that there's other inclusion people that we need to be working with in our total development plan.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just real briefly, I just wanted to mention that this process, or this, whatever you want to call it, idea came from a citizen, and I'm going to just say Roger Springman is one that pushed this, and I appreciate that input from the public. I also want to just say that what Alder Swadley talked about with regard to the townships outside of this area, I didn't write this alone, I had some help, and we discussed possibly trying to put the townships in this, but I don't think that would have been appropriate because this is for our city. But I do think it's very important that the township gets very serious about working with the school district in the same way to maximize the potential that we could have by attracting people to our school district. So I think that's a very good plan of attack.
Thank you. Alder Person Reeves?
Just a clarification for my sake. So at this point, we are just talking about the school suggestion amendment, right? So folks certainly have an opportunity to add other amendments, correct? So...
Right, right. We're going through the one as suggested by Alder Person Engelberger.
Right?
Thank you. So we're all comfortable with what we're voting on? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Further motions or amendments to the original Ordinance Six, 2017? Alder Person Reeves?
Yeah, I had, and I'll probably look for some guidance on this, but I mentioned it earlier when Attorney Dregony was giving us some information. So this is not anything that's not already in the comprehensive plan, but I would like to see it in the implementation plan. It's a very large document, and I think that, for me anyway, I like, I go kind of to the end and look at where we need to, you know, what we need to focus on when we look at, where do we start, because it's going to be tough to get through this whole thing and stay focused. So I was just going to suggest that under, it doesn't have to be under detail planning necessarily, but for ordinances from page, I believe it comes from page 136 and 137, that we add the detailed design standards for multifamily housing and also write a developed, write a balanced residential development policy. Those are already in the plan. I would just like to see it in the implementation plan, just because I think after everything we've talked about and our focus on wanting to make meaningful development decisions ahead of time, making sure our ordinances match, I just feel like I'd like to see that specifically in an implementation plan. So I don't know if we should do two different ones or...
I'm going to ask you, and not the whole thing.
Sure.
But Tammy was trying to get down...
Sure. I've got, "Add the detailed design standards for multifamily housing." Under ordinances was... To the implementation plan? To the implement, yeah. So I would not even say where it needs to be necessarily.
What page?
So I'll read that again, I apologize. Thinking out loud. Is it page 136 and 137 is where? The implementation plan, I believe, is on page 166, or 165, 166. But the section that talks about the detailed design standards for multifamily housing is on page like 136, 137.
Talking about moving it or...
Adding it, just, yeah.
As duplication?
Yeah, just as a, under the implementation plan.
So you're taking us to page 165?
Correct. Mike Slavny has... 166, 165, one of those, depending on where it landed.
Mike Slavny may be able to help me.
If you're following along, it's actually in our packet, she's on actually page 190, but again, it's actually of the plan. She's talking about page 165 or 166.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
Table 22.
I'm sorry. If you're all right, Alder Person Reeves, I think Mr. Slavny would have some help.
That would be great.
So if we go to the land use row on the second page of the implementation table, which is one, page 166, there we go. So I'm about two-thirds of the way down the page there. We could add a second item under the one that says, "Implement the land use recommendations," and the, I think would be under that land use heading, and it could say, "Implement the residential balance policy and the residential design standards for multifamily housing," and then we could cross-reference those pages.
That would be, that would be fine with me.
Can you just say that again? I've got, "Implement the residential balance policy and the residential design standards."
For multifamily housing.
Thank you. On page 166, under land use.
And I would note that that balance policy is, I believe, a very proactive way of attaining those affordable housing objectives. It does not speak to owner occupied or rental. It ensures that in every larger neighborhood, there are opportunities for the full spectrum of housing types. And having done some expert testimony in those kinds of lawsuits, I think it puts you in good standing in terms of having a firm basis on, you know, therein your comprehensive plan in most of the areas recommended for new residential development.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Tammy as soon as she's comfortable, or should take a step back before that to make sure that, I have an amendment proposed by Alder Person Reeves, but I'm not sure that I had a second.
Second.
Was there a second? Second by Engelberger. Thank you. And that amendment said?
Motion by Reeves to include in the implementation plan, page 16, or actually, I should take that, okay. Motion by Reeves to amend the comprehensive plan to add the following, "Implement the residential balance policy and the residential design standards for multifamily housing" found on page 166 of the comprehensive plan under land use. Second by Engelberger. What wasn't actually found there originally, it's more on page like 136, 137.
It's in Chapter Six, Section C.
Oh, I see, okay. I apologize. Thank you.
She's referencing the document, but she's including, the motion actually is to include on, in Table 22, which is our implementation strategies, under land use, these two additional recommendations.
Yes, correct.
And then the reference is back to page 136 and 137.
137, mhm.
Reference to those.
There is mud.
Lost, no.
There is mud.
You lost, Tammy?
You're putting it on this table, correct?
Right.
Yes. Table, what was it again? Table 2?
Table 22.
Table 22. On page...
That's found on page 165 and 166.
Table 22.
Under the category of land use, and then we have the recommendation, which is her amendment, and the reference then is page 136 and 137.
Yes, and it's to include the detailed design standards for multifamily housing.
Were you comfortable with the, with the way that Mike Slavny phrased it? Were you comfortable with that phrasing?
I just took it right off the, so, I mean, I just took it right out of the document, I thought, but as long as it matches a document, I'm comfortable with that.
We'll read it again as soon as Tammy feels comfortable.
Yeah. Just a second.
Why don't you read that?
Okay. Motion by Reeves to amend the comprehensive plan under Table 22 as found on page 165, 166, in the category of land use, referencing page 136 and 137, I'm sorry, I missed that seven, to add the following quotation, "Implement the residential balance policy and the residential design standards for multifamily housing," end quote, second by Engelberger. Does that, so that's all just I had written? Oh, yes, thank you.
So I think the objective is to match the headings on those pages.
Yeah, thank you.
So if I could, Tammy.
Yeah.
Implement the balanced residential development policy.
Balanced residential policy, okay. Balanced.
Balanced residential development.
Development policy, aha.
It's on page 136 of the report, items one and two.
Okay.
Under housing recommendations.
And the...
Residential...
The detailed...
I can get it here, okay.
Take residential out.
Right.
Design standards.
Detailed design standards.
For multifamily housing.
For multifamily housing.
This is the last time, by the way, that Tammy allows Lana to go to any kind of training in this council meeting.
As presented in Chapter Six, Section C.
As presented in Chapter Six, Section C.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, by the way.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Yes, you were helping me limp along.
Would folks like that red back?
After seat. After seat? Okay.
I'm kind of looking to get indications. Would you like that red back to you before we vote? All right.
Okay, here we go. Motion by Reeves to amend the comprehensive plan under Table 22 as found on page 165 to 166, in the category of land use, referencing page 136 and 137.
22 as found on page 165 to 166, in the category of land use, referencing page 136 and 137, to add the following quotation, 'Implement the balanced residential development policy and the detailed design standards for multifamily housing as presented in chapter six, section C,' quotation by Engelberger."
And you can actually get rid of the reference before to page 136 and 137 because it's basically the same thing as, as the section that you just...
So, just say category of land use, to add the following?
Right.
Okay.
All right. As soon as Tammy is ready. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. So, we currently have three amendments to ordinance six, 2017. Further comments, discussion, or amendments? Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to thank Rodney and his staff, the Plan Commission, Mike and the consultant, consulting firm. This has been quite a long, drawn-out process and, you know, we've had some good input from the public. I think we've learned a little bit from, from the process. And, you know, to get two amendments after working for nine months in a two or, two or two and a half inch thick document, I think is pretty good. So, I'm going to vote to approve.
Just a correction. We have three amendments on the floor. We don't want to leave anyone out.
This is as amended.
Yes, yep. Three amendments to the ordinance. Correct. Alderperson Trul?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'd like to echo Alderman Engelberger's comments. I think one of the things that, through the course of this, the last, seems like it's been more than nine months.
Yeah, maybe it has.
Process. There've been a lot of, a lot of concerns expressed at different times about our openness and our willingness to actually hear the public. And I think, if I can borrow two minutes of your time, I think what's going to be most important is let's learn from this experience and talk about what we actually need to do when this needs to be brought back again in 10 years. And that was, this started with a budget discussion two years ago where we had a variety of options as to what we were going to spend for outreach. And the Plan Commission, when Mike and his team came to us and talked about the comp plan, offered a variety of options. But, to some extent, in large part, we'd already set, the budget had already set, the amount of outreach that we could do. In effect, we had enough money to, that was put in the budget, to do a postcard. And then, we had, you know, the online survey. The Plan Commission at that time wondered aloud whether that was enough. And we had some discussions as a part of that. But, then, we went down that process. So, the budget was established. Then, when we started this process as a Plan Commission, the first item that we had was a public participation plan, or citizen involvement plan, that we brought before this council and passed it. At that point, I don't think any of us realized what that really meant. We talked about a number of public hearings. We talked about involvement. And we moved from there. I want to, in addition to the people that Mike, Michael mentioned, I really want to single out, you mentioned Roger Springman. Roger and a few other folks, really from the community, grabbed a hold of this and said, "Wait a minute. You don't understand what's happening." We, as a Plan Commission, thought we were understanding what was up. We were moving forward and doing things, but we weren't doing a good job of communicating with the community. Little things, like halfway through the process, we finally started putting things in the public library. We had, then we had a variety of presentations. And we got, we started really getting citizen involvement. And frankly, it was because of a few very involved community members that we, that literally dragged us back to that point. And I think that's probably one of the, a lesson I would like to pass on for all of us. There are times, again, whether it's the folks that are watching this evening, or that come to other meetings, or community meetings, or things like that, we think we're doing a decent job of communicating. But, we have to remember that folks are tuning in for the first time, or are coming to the meeting for the first time. And we need to be ever vigilant about showing them where they can get the information and how we can, how they can become involved. So, I just, I offer this as a, now looking back, hopefully as we adopt this this evening, it's that when whoever's on this board, you know, in 10 years, that they have a meaningful discussion the year before it starts about what they want to do and how we can, we can do everything possible to get the public involved. So, with that, I encourage you to vote in favor of the plan as amended.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma?
And you had mentioned Roger. And I do also want to mention another person who is in my district, Denise. Because she did an incredible amount of work looking at the previous comprehensive plan and provided some really detailed information for both us and also for our public, our public involvement in this. So, I didn't want to go tonight without mentioning her name as well.
Thank you. All right. Alderperson Reeves?
I hope this won't be too painful, but I actually have another thought about an amendment. Because of those two comments, it reminded me that the importance that a lot of our, the city places on the downtown, because it's, it really is very different than the rest of the city. And I had a number of people, when I was out canvassing, asked me about a master development plan for downtown specifically. So, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't suggest adding to the implementation plan a downtown master plan that we complete. And whether we put a timeframe on it or not, I don't have a strong feeling about that. But, I would like to see a downtown master plan because I just really feel like it's its own thing. And so, I'm going to at least throw it out there as a proposed amendment.
Okay. So, the motion is?
To add to the implementation plan, develop a downtown master plan. And I won't put a timeframe on it. I would like to say five years. Let's, I'll just say that, within five years. So, I'll read that again. Downtown master plan to complete in five years, under the implementation plan.
And I would second that.
Okay. I'm going to get comments or questions regarding the motion, the amendment on the floor. Council President Swedley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I guess I'd like to hear from Mike as far as what is in the plan currently that might suggest that? Or, do you think we need to be more specific on including it in the plan as Alderperson Reeves has suggested?
I think if this went into the table, it would be in that first category that starts on the previous page, under detailed planning. It is a form of a, of a detailed plan. So, the comprehensive plan, in combination with the zoning district, zoning ordinance, indicates where downtown format kind of development up to the sidewalk, lot line to lot line on the side, where that belongs. It does not provide lot by lot recommendations about where is infill needed, where do we not have a keeper building where redevelopment should be encouraged. It doesn't talk about specific strategies for any particular property. It doesn't zoom into the area and indicate perhaps where a wider sidewalk is needed, or where outdoor seating should be encouraged. I think the, the thing that a downtown master plan does, if you can imagine the city as the redeveloper, and you are planning in detail what you would like to see happen and how it can happen, I think that's what a downtown master plan does. And I think that's what you have in mind. I'm not sure.
Yes. Well, because of the historic nature and because we've done multiple surveys and I think even when folks came to the comp plan, I mean, downtown revitalization, protecting our downtown, that's one of our most valuable resources. It's clearly very important to a lot of people. And you can't, you can't replace many of those buildings. So, if we don't talk about what's, how we want that to look, and someone, you know, we talked about being proactive and somebody comes in and they want to put up a shiny, you know, building that we feel this does not fit with, but we don't really, we haven't developed a plan on what we want it to look like. So, that's exactly right. I think we need to, I think we need a master plan on what our downtown should look like and how we can be the driver of that bus.
And I think that we, I'm the circuit riding planner for Mount Horeb, you know, comparable downtown. And they just finished a downtown master plan. And the next month, they undertook a TIF district to implement that plan. And I think they have eight rehab projects going on right now and three infill development projects. And I think, I think part of that was luck in terms of timing. But, in terms of providing a very site-specific blueprint as to what to implement, I think it's a really good model document and project that I would suggest that is something for a relatively comparable community that had immediate impact.
Okay, thank you. We have amendment number four by Alderperson Reeves, second by Alderperson Boersma. And Tammy will read that for us.
"Motion by Reeves to amend the comprehensive plan to add to the implementation plan to develop a downtown master plan within five years," second by Boersma.
And just as a suggestion, and then as, as Michael had mentioned, it would go in under the first area, the detailed planning, as another one of the recommendations.
Page 165.
I agree.
Under detailed planning.
165. So, I've got, "To amend the comprehensive plan under detailed planning, found on page 165, to add to the implementation plan to develop a mass, downtown master plan within five years."
It's easier to say table 22. Would you recommend that as opposed to a page?
Page one change. So, under, found under table 22.
Detailed planning. Correct.
Under table 22. Okay. "To amend the comprehensive plan in table 22, under detailed planning, found, I'm sorry, no. I get too many founds again." Okay. "To amend the comprehensive plan in table 22, under detailed planning, to add to the implementation plan, to develop a downtown master plan within five years."
All right. Further comments on that amendment? Alderperson Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree. I think we should do this. And, you know, we've got a railroad corridor plan, but it's only a portion of the downtown district. And I think it's only appropriate to do this. So, I'm going to support it.
Alderperson Johnson?
I'm going to say something nice.
She got the crowd laughing.
Mayor, I've got a question. We have a historic overlay district. So, with this master historical plan that Lisa wants, how, how is that going to work with that, what we already have? You know, on the books kind of thing?
Yep.
There's also a, Rodney, help me with the name of the book that the landmarks put together a while ago. It's called Downtown, I don't care.
Design Guidelines.
Design Guidelines for the Downtown Neighborhood. So, I think those all dovetail. And like, you can help us how those all fit together for that detailed neighborhood.
Well, it's, it's an excellent start in a community with so many historic resources. I mean, those sites would be identified as keepers. There may be improvements consistent with historic preservation policies that would be identified for some or all of those sites that were specific. But, the notion of the plan would be to identify designs and projects that would forward those preservation goals.
Okay.
As well as stimulate economic development, employment, and quality of life.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel, Council President Kittelsohn, you've now been...
Thank you. By adding some of this stuff, I'm getting just a little bit nervous for all the policies that we have. How many of those are going to overlap and how many of them are going to have to be rewritten? Right now, with doing the downtown and with the other ones you've just discussed, we already know that we do have some issues with that. So, where do we start by enacting all of this? I think we have a serious concern on that.
That's always kind of my question.
Yep. I hear the question. And maybe Michael can help us.
I want to make sure I understand the question. Are there aspects of the, of the landmarks plan and the historic inventory that are a little out of date?
We could probably ask Attorney Dragney to help us out here a little bit on what we're referring to. We're referring to the landmarks and the historic overlay and different policies that are in place of doing things. And then, you're finding out that you can't.
Well, this is now specifically in the context of developing a detailed neighborhood plan. I think if the city, is that, is that the context of the question? And so, I think if, if there's going to be an effort to develop a detailed neighborhood plan for the downtown area, the people working on that need to be mindful of what the existing regulations are. And as part of that planning process, I would expect there would be a look at whether any changes should be made. So, in, I guess one might ask the question, are we getting the cart before the horse? I'm now working on developing amendments to existing zoning regulations and the landmarks commission ordinances relating specifically to city objectives in the downtown area with respect to historic preservation. So, I'm working on that now. And one might ask, well, if we're going to be developing a detailed neighborhood plan for the downtown area, what should come first, the plan or the regulations? And, because I'm developing ordinances now, then if you move into a planning process, I guess at the end of that, part of that planning process might require then looking at, do we have the ordinances we need to achieve our objectives in our plan now, or should we make any changes? For example, one example is section 78 dash 518 or 519 of your zoning code right now contains already, contains design standards applicable to buildings in the downtown design overlay zoning district. I expect as part of a planning process relating to the downtown, somebody would probably look at those and ask the question, are those appropriate standards for our downtown? I'm not sure, but I expect that would probably be part of the process.
In my experience, a downtown master plan tends to accept those established design guidelines and requirements. A downtown master plan typically is more involved with buildings that are not keepers, with vitality, with public improvements within the right of way, with stimulating redevelopment where maybe there's vacant property or underutilized property that is not historic. At the end of the downtown master plan, there may be insights in how to tweak policies that apply to individual or all buildings. But, generally, that is not the focus unless it's the desire of the council to make it one of the, the thing that's, things that are looked at in detail.
Thank you. Council President Swedley?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I certainly support the amendment. I'm trying to visualize how this will happen, if it'll come through the Planning Commission, or if it will start with the landmarks. Based on your experience, what would you recommend for starting this particular?
Well, ultimately, it ends up with the Plan Commission recommending the plan to the common council. Well, ultimately, it ends up with the plan commission recommending the plan to the, the common council. Depending on the community, there would typically be other entities involved in the plan. And those entities would represent historic preservation. They would represent economic development. It, it may represent housing. It may represent recreation or environmental protection. All of these resources are in the downtown. It may be most appropriate then to create an ad hoc committee to steer the plan that represented the spectrum of those interests. And that committee would do the bulk of the work on the plan and then recommend it to the, the plan commission and ultimately to the council. That's only one possibility. I think that's an efficient process and it ensures within that efficiency that a broad range of interests are represented.
Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Michael was starting to steal my thunder. When Lisa proposed this, I started thinking about not getting hung up on just landmarks. But if we're truly talking about a downtown master plan, we're talking about things like our parks. We're talking about traffic and parking. We're talking about snow removal. We're talking about a storefront renovation program or a loan program. We're talking about infill landmarks, getting the RDA involved in funding. It's much bigger, but it's focused. And the thing is, to that point, as he was just, as Michael was just mentioning, we start talking about, different groups have done things. Public Works has looked at some of the issues downtown. We've talked, you know, Parks has talked about things, the RDA. So there's an opportunity. And that's why I was, I'm really excited about Lisa suggesting this. Because at the end of the day, this document is, as Mike said, as Mike Engelberger said, it's, it's, you know, two inches thick. And I hope it doesn't just end up on everybody's, you know, shelf someplace. This is the, this document and specifically this table, table 22, is our implementation process. So what do we want to take away from this? And I hope this helps guide us as, from a policy standpoint. And so I'm glad you didn't let us get by without suggesting this. Because I think there are a number of areas that, that just naturally will come together. And I do think it's probably the best way is, is that we either create some type of ad hoc or perhaps plan starts it and then invites each of these other entities that have impact on downtown to, to be a part of the team.
Thank you. Further comments about the motion on the floor? Would you like to read it for us one more time before we vote?
I'd love to.
Let's go for it, yeah.
Motion by Reeves to amend the comprehensive plan in table 22, under detailed planning, to add to the implementation plan to develop a mass downtown master plan within five years.
All right. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Takes us back to ordinance six of 2017. Motion for approval by Alderman Trul, second by Alder Person Engelberger, to include the four amendments that we've just gone through on the floor tonight. Further conversation on the original motion. Council President Swadley.
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, in addition to those that have already been thanked, I'd like to acknowledge the work that the consultants did. They were asked or pushed or however you want to phrase it, to go far above and beyond where they might normally have gone through this process. And we do appreciate that. And I think that the finished product represents that. And I also believe that members of the council and staff that participated in this did so in a very professional manner. When you start talking about things that are near and dear to people, people get very passionate about things that they think are important. And I think that everybody did a nice job of representing themselves, the council and the community as a whole. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. We'll vote on ordinance six, 2017, by roll call.
Kittleson.
Yes.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
Hirsch.
Aye.
Eyes have it nine to one.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you. New business begins this evening by taking us a step backwards to resolution 106 included in our consent agenda this evening. If I can find my first page.
Wouldn't we do 105 first?
Resolution 106, 2017 comes from our public safety committee. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety brings forth resolution 106 dash 2017, authorizing and directing proper city officials to approve a temporary Class B, Class B retailer's license and special event license to the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. And I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trul, second by Kittleson. Alder Person Boersma.
Yes, and thank you, Your Honor. The reason why I ask that this be removed is from consent agenda and be addressed at this point is, my beef is that I'm, I'm not sure that we need to have alcoholic beverages served at the Coffee Break Festival to, which includes lots of kids and families each year. And the festival is all about coffee, cars, and spitting of coffee beans. I'm not, I'm being very, again, very consistent. We'll be voting no to yet another shift in a movement to have Stoughton have alcohol at what I see as pretty much all of our cherished city events. And I will be absolutely voting no to allowing this to happen. I'm, I think it's a trend that is, is not something that I can get behind.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Here, I have a question. Is it true that there's no alcohol served at the fair?
That's true.
I don't think there is.
I had ice cream at the fair.
No, that's correct. No alcohol at the fair.
So I'm just curious why, and if, you know, at this fair, you know, because I heard someone was asking for some beer and they couldn't find any. But at this event, we have beer when it's a coffee event.
This is a festival, yeah. Every event's a little different in their own way. Junior Fair is very proud that they've been able to remain alcohol-free.
Yep. Comments or questions regarding resolution 106? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Let's vote by roll call.
Swadley.
Aye.
Boersma.
No.
Johnson.
No.
Reeves.
Aye.
Mieske.
Aye.
Engelberger.
Aye.
Johnson.
I don't know, we couldn't hear.
I know, I'm sorry. Johnson.
Aye.
Trul.
Aye.
Kittleson.
Aye.
Eight to two.
That motion carries.
Excuse me.
Oh, we forgot Alder Person Hirsch.
I apologize. Yeah. Hirsch, I am so sorry.
No.
Okay. So that is seven to three.
Try to count as a yes. Try to count as a yes.
Okay, that takes us to new business. Resolution 105 of 2017 comes from our public safety committee. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety Commission bring, or Committee brings forth resolution 105 dash 2017, authorizing and directing proper city officials to issue an operator's license to Bobby Becker. And I would, the Public Safety Commission denied this request. And so I would move that we reject this resolution.
Second.
To be consistent.
It's a matter of whether we vote yes or we vote no.
We usually vote to approve, but then everyone votes no if that's their, their desire.
So with, with my second acceptance, the motion will be to approve, but I would encourage you to vote against.
There you go.
Second.
There's a motion by Alder Person Trul, second by Jensen. Alder Person Trul.
Again, the commission did take this up. The participant did come. And, and at the recommendation of staff, we are recommending that it be denied.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Alder Person Hirsch.
Did the, did Mr. Becker show up for the meeting? Did you encourage him to come tonight to try to sway? Okay, thank you.
Further comments? All those in favor, aye? Opposed, no?
No.
That motion is denied. Resolution 107, 2017 comes from our finance committee. Alder Person Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance presents resolution 107, 2017, preliminary resolution declaring the intent to exercise special assessment powers for the 2017 street projects relating to the Giles Street. This was approved tonight at, at finance. And I so move.
Second.
Motion by Mieske, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Mieske.
This is a, a request to have special assessment to a project that was already had started. And this was due to the fact that circumstances allowed for a more extensive project than was originally planned for. And therefore, the scope had enlarged. And we now need to apply the special assessment to the new parts of the project.
Thank you. Alder Person Hirsch.
What the new parts of the project is, are there going to be more costs incurred for the residents that they should be aware of?
I'll let Rodney figure that out.
The costs will be incurred consistent with the framework of the other, other assessments to other property owners. For curb gutter sidewalk, they'll be outlined in the assessment schedule that comes forward out of this. But they'll be consistent with the ordinances that are in place and would have been applied to the other parts of the project as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Boersma.
Yeah, two issues, Rodney. One is how many families are affected and what kind of notice is going to be given then?
I have no idea about the number of families. There's, I believe there's eight properties involved. I don't know how many families may or may not be in there.
Whatever properties, yes.
And two of the properties are owned by Scallon Retirement Services. Two of them are for sale right now. And they will be getting the public hearing notice once the date's been established and the engineer's report is completed. They'll get a copy of that and notice of the public hearing about 30 days in advance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. And that really was where I was going. I, I'm concerned. I appreciate the fact that we perhaps have an opportunity to make something happen. It's just back to whether, whether these residents have been provided proper notice. You know, again, if this was a possibility, I don't know if, you know, we do that on, on future jobs or things, but indicate that, that we know a certain part of a project is going to happen and there may be some additional or whatever. I, I just, I'm just a little concerned about, about when this might have, when these folks might have been made aware of the potential special assessment.
Well, this is an anomaly. This normally doesn't happen. This project's scope did increase. It originally included sanitary sewer and sewer laterals. Pricing on the overall project was quite attractive. It allowed for the lead water services to be replaced in this additional block segment at the same time. And once you've done that, you've, you've really chopped up this, this 70-year-old street. So it really was prudent to do the curb and gutter and the other replacement work at this time. The work has, has been completed to the, this portion of the block that's accessible. So they're aware of the project. I've spoken to at least two of the property owners that are firsthand knowledgeable of the fact that we're going through this process. This process is afforded to the city to proceed with special assessments even post-construction. It's not the, not the most attractive timing for us, and we don't try to do this. But we've also been contacted by adjacent properties that have been assessed and wondering how this is moving forward for these properties where the improvements occurred to ensure that they'll be treated equally. So they'll have their public hearing process and the notice will afford them an opportunity to come and speak to the council in approximately a month, month and a half.
And if I can continue, I think that's really the key here. Again, I don't, please don't take my comment to reflect negatively on the project in terms of the fact you've got an opportunity to do more. And that once you got into it, you know, there were, there were some logical decisions here. It just keeps coming back to, again, we were talking about public involvement, public participation. This is as close as it hits to anybody in terms of special assessments and things. And I, and I think, you know, as a part of, I applaud your efforts, Rodney, and, and Public Works in finding having, and again, with utilities as well, creating a master plan and talking about what projects are coming forward in the future. My concern is just, again, in this case, that, that suddenly some folks may, may have woken up one day and found out that we were working across the street and, and they're going to end up with, with an assessment. Whereas I would like to make sure that we're consistent in our, in our notice and providing people as much opportunity. The fact that, that a couple of these are owned by Scallon, that's, that's one thing. The fact that those couple of folks that, that are, a couple of properties that are for sale, I'm quite confident that would, that probably came as a surprise to them if they're now looking at a, at a special assessment that they weren't planning on as a part of when they put their homes up for sale. So it's just back to making sure that we do everything in our power to give people as much notice as possible. And, and if there are possibilities of additional scope, that we just notify people that you may perhaps come under this in the future with improvements.
But one, one follow-up if I can, just to highlight. Been involved in this type of activity for about 20 years here. I think this is the first time we've actually had this situation arise where the, the projects expanded and included assessments because of a circumstance like this. So it's an anomaly and hopefully we can avoid it in the future as well.
I hope we take that into consideration when the public hearing happens and those folks come forward. Because it is that same anomaly.
Alder Person Hirsch.
To follow up on that, I guess I would be, because this is coming up as an anomaly and we're not allowing people like a lot of time of notice. I mean, I don't know when the work's going to be done. I mean, is it normal to do the special assessment? I mean, are they getting enough time to prepare to be able to afford these changes? Because this is, this is not fair in such a way. If some people get a notice like a year in advance that they can save and all of a sudden this one is an anomaly and they're going to be expected to come up with, you know, $1,500, $2,000 in a short period of time. I mean, that's, I think we need to really start looking at these policies of when people are notified. I mean, again, I just got another couple of emails this week about potential for next year. And people need to know what to start saving for. Because nobody is rich in this. Well, some people, most people are not rich in this community and they need time to budget this in.
I think you're requesting a response.
Yeah.
I, I think we held the public hearing. I believe it was in March or April. So there was three to four months difference in notification period to these folks. Again, this is something that's not normal. But it does still afford them the opportunity to understand that the billing doesn't take place immediately until the project's complete. You're probably looking at six to eight months potentially yet before the bills would actually be disseminated, before they become responsible to pay. The, the range of these special assessments, our estimates right now before the, before the engineer's estimates are about $600 to $1,400, $1,400 or $1,500. That doesn't diminish the, the need to notify them. But they're not the, the $2,000 to $3,000, you know, number that you, you mentioned. So we will give them proper, this is the proper procedure. Remember, this is an allocation of cost based on the ordinances. What we're really talking about is the period of time in which the notification or the process would have been allowed for them to. They, they still have the public process to come and challenge the special assessment or the process with you at the public hearing. So that's still an opportunity for them to come and do so. But right now, we're trying to allocate the costs according to the ordinances for these properties where a benefiting property owner has had improvements made to it.
Thank you. I have Alder Person Engelberger and then Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to support this. And, you know, I understand it's after the fact, but I guess I'm trusting that Rodney has checked with legal counsel to make sure that we're doing things properly here. We're not treating anybody any differently with the way we assess things. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, isn't there also a mechanism for people to get some financial assistance or extend a period of time in some cases or some instances?
Two, two things. If they're above a certain amount, they're afforded an opportunity to defer, to pay equal installments over a period of five to 10 years, depending on the amount. And then if there's a financial hardship issue for a particular property owner, the ordinances offer an opportunity for that consideration as well, depending on circumstances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Johnson.
Thank you. Rodney, thank you. And I know you're doing everything up to, up to par. As far as a special assessment, those, those things happen. As far as a special assessment, those, those things happen, and I understand it. Um, my question is, and maybe the mayor could answer this, or you could answer it. When we do the CIP for future out, that what roads we're gonna do, at what time are they notified? Because I'm kinda looking in the future when my street's gonna be. So is there a way that we, like, if it's two, three out, like in our gestation where it's gonna be, that we can kind of... I, I just asking you when, 'cause we have a plan, but we don't, I don't know when we let them know, two, three years out, when we're gonna be doing their street. So, thank you.
We have a new team member. Brett Abar is now participating with, um, Mr. Cardes and myself to help put together a more definitive plan going forward. And once that becomes public, as many questions about cost become uncertain, and that's, that's, that's part of the challenge with, um, enlarging the scope of the area that you might consider for special assessments. If we'd included this Giles Street block and not had any estimated cost to give them, there would have been as much of a cloud for those folks not knowing. So we're certainly trying to provide them as accurate of information as we can as soon as it becomes available. The five-year plan, that becomes something that becomes solidified, um, each year, and that will be able to be, um, more broadly disseminated as we, as a threesome, start to make sure that we're in concert about projects. And you'll have to also recall that there are projects that change for other circumstances, uh, funding and a, a number of other things that drive it. Most recently, the utilities has had a concerted effort to deal with lead services and lead water mains and stuff, or lead infrastructure. So, um, that's been driving some of it, and we've also had a number of streets that were not really envisioned to need attention, that we've had to jump on and take care of sooner than we thought as well.
Thank you. Alderperson Kittleson.
I guess I have to ask the question, what happened here for this to go on? I mean, I don't, I don't know what happened, where we had to go into the other properties and so forth?
No, I, I started by describing this, this segment, this block actually had planned for a sanitary sewer main replacement. Sanitary sewer was being replaced. Um, bids came in that were quite attractive, and it really allowed for, uh, the utilities to consider one of their objectives to deal with lead infrastructure. And they were able to move forward with a water main replacement in this block at the same time as the sanitary sewer. So you would've had sanitary sewer and water mains, as well as sanitary laterals and water services. So you would've essentially diced up the entire street that's probably in that seventy-year-old range. So the pavement and, and curb and gutter and the like was really appropriate for replacement, knowing a number of segments of curb and gutter were gonna get replaced because of utility work as, as well at the same time.
So in other words, it made sense to do everything once instead of twice?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
So that's really what we're discussing.
Well, we're discuss, you know, we're...
I mean, it's, I, I wouldn't wanna get hit with the bill either without knowing about it, but I would probably rather try to work this out this way than all of a sudden have my street tore up two or three times.
We, we, uh, recognize it being uncomfortable. I think that's why this is an anomaly and hasn't happened over in the past. But circumstances this year really lent themselves to move forward with it and get it completed this way.
So in other words, it's also better for the health issues of getting rid of the lead pipes?
We believe so.
Thank you. Alderperson Boersma.
Thank you, Honored. I, I will be supporting this. However, I, I don't wanna minimize the effect of, uh, property for sale. I am a Realtor active, uh, in this community, and, uh, special assessments do have, uh, a negative effect on a sale of a property. So I think I agree that as much advanced planning as possible for people to do appropriate disclosures, even for property that's for sale, is pretty important. So, um, as much advanced planning for people who are continuing to reside in their residences and/or sell them, I think is, um, you know, it can impede a, a sale of a property, although right now, properties are going pretty quickly.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
Thank you. And Rodney, I didn't mean to, like, come down on you. I didn't, that was not my intent. I was just making sure that the constituents have enough time to prepare. But, um, with respect to the lead pipe issue, I'm really, I, I'm happy that you're addressing this. Does this also means that the lead issue going from the main to the houses is actually gonna be taken care of too?
Go ahead, Bob.
No. Uh, right now, the, the lead services from the new water main to the park road area are being replaced. All the affected customers in the project this year got letters indicating that we were suggesting that they do work on their private services, what they own, from the park road to the house. It's my understanding a couple people have done so, but they were all put on notice that that would be a good time to do it.
I mean, I guess I, I would highly encourage the utilities in this, uh, council to really take a look at putting that as a, a budget item or some kind of grant program, because I really do not like that we're digging up the road, dealing with our lead issue, but allowing homes to still have a lead issue, a public safety issue, um, for these current owners, and then it, it just doesn't make sense that we're not replacing all those at this time.
Thank you. Alderperson Engelberger and then Boersma.
Thank you, Honored. I just wanted to, uh, kind of address that also with, along with what Bob said. I've been a member of the Utilities Committee several times in the last few years, and, and every year we talk about this, and we encourage people to make those changes. And the problem, the real problem is, it costs money to do that, and probably a very large majority of the people that have the opportunity to do it while the street is tore up don't take advantage of it. It's probably because of the money. They, apparently they outweigh the cost to the danger. Uh, we do encourage that people do this, and I believe there's been talk about, uh, federal subsidies and, and that type of thing, but you know how that goes these days. So, uh, we, if we can do more, just give us an idea on how we can do more.
Alderperson Boersma, and then we'll come back to it.
Thank you, Honored. Yeah, I, I just wanna, as, we've been talking a lot about planning, um, and I, and I think, um, I really wanna advocate for, if there's any possibility of putting underground, um, rather than overhead, um, u- utilities in place, I think it would be really nice if we could start, as a, as a city, to start looking at, um, doing more underground.
Thank you. Alderperson Hirsch.
No, just to follow up, and I know Bob was going to respond to it, I, I just think... I don't know how much public education we're doing with respect to lead in homes. I think that, you know, I don't remember ever seeing anything, and I think we need to talk about the seriousness of this. You know, young children being exposed to lead is very serious, and I don't think we're taking it as serious. I mean, it's not as bad as Flint, Michigan, but I don't want us to... We're all fully aware of the health problems with lead, and we're sitting here and allowing lead to continue to be a problem in this, in this city. And I think, I think each one of us needs to really consider that. I think it's wrong.
Thank you. Utilities Director Cardes.
Thank you. I totally agree. Uh, and you're going to see that I'm making some comments back to CACP about, uh, lead services and private lead services. To make a long story short, uh, a utility like ours is precluded from doing anything on private property. That's law. And, uh, there's, there is, uh, movement in the state legislature to change that and, uh, allow a utility to create a revolving loan program. But right now, we can't touch it. The Public Service Commission says stay away. It's, it goes against public health. The advocates that are against the legislation that would allow us to create a revolving loan program is the Wisconsin Manufacturers. And what they wanna do is they want the city to spend the money that we provide with a pilot to do this, rather than charge it in our water rates. So it's a, it's all tied up in the Capitol, and hopefully we're going to be able to get some resolution. I'm not as optimistic in dealing with the legislature or, or the federal government like I used to be. But when it is available, by all means, we're going to have a program. And, uh, but right now, we just can't do a whole lot.
Can I follow up? How did Madison, uh, they, they got rid of it a long time ago, and how do, how were they able to do it and were not?
They got into it very, very early, and I think they got some support out of the Public Service Commission at that time, which they may not have gotten today. Uh, but at the same time, they're also a pretty big utility, and we're pretty small. Uh, they, uh, they did a program, and they were one of the first in the nation to do it. Uh, there aren't that many that, uh, have gone that way. And, uh, the money that's come from the federal government, uh, we just read, I think, uh, last week, uh, where the, uh, where the State of Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources provided funds to, uh, communities to address lead issues. You had to have a blighted, a blighted community. So where did that money go? It went to Green Bay, Racine, City of Milwaukee, and it leaves, uh, smaller utilities like ours to kinda flounder by the wayside. But when the laws change, you're going to see us in there swinging.
How, how many homes are affected with this in our community?
Uh, we have the numbers. I...
Is it thousands or hundreds or...?
Oh, I think hundreds.
Okay. And what is, what is the typical cost?
It depends on whether it's a straight shot from the curb stop into the house or whether it goes through a few walls and some fences. Everyone changes, but I think I've seen figures under two thousand dollars. We have customers doing these right now. Uh, it's just that, uh, we have a good handle on the lead services that we own from the main to the park row. We have very little information on what's happened on private property over the years. We're seeing a fair interest right now, and anytime a customer is going to be replacing their line, we're going to replace ours at the same time.
How many per year do you think it would be? I mean, I'm just trying to get a, a cost estimate of what we're talking about.
In, in the past, I think, uh, perhaps a half a dozen a year. I think we're seeing more interest now.
No, I'm talking about of the houses that we're fixing the roads and doing this work. Of those per year, how many would need that replacement, not how many people actually sign up for it?
Okay, we're, we're probably going to replace in the neighborhood of forty lead services this year. Out of those forty, I would guess that it'll be under five that'll do their private work.
So under fi- only five houses have the lead problem?
No.
No, that's not, my question is, how many houses in those areas that we're working on actually have a lead problem?
Have a lead problem?
Well, have, still have those lead pipes going into their house.
Nearly all of them.
And so how many houses are we working on per year?
About forty.
Forty, so it'd be forty houses per year at about two thousand dollars.
Possibly.
I think that's a question that maybe Bob and his staff will have to look at a little harder with more detail.
Yeah.
Looking on this budget, I want to know these numbers, so if we can, if there's a way that the city can finagle part funding or something like that, I think we need to look into that.
Well, yeah, and if I could respond, uh, when I say that the utility is precluded from doing any work on private property, the city is not.
Right, that's why I wanna know the numbers.
So the city could do a borrowing, and, uh, we could help administer it. I believe that's legal now. In the future, when, uh, our hands are no longer tied, then we'll certainly look at implementing a problem or, uh, implementing a policy and a solution. The, the thing is, is that we're going to push for a no-interest loan. Uh, there are some communities right now that would require a, a replacement. We'd never advocate that. I think it still has to be a customer choice. But we could help provide the money, and then perhaps over five years or whatever, get it paid back.
Thank you, Bob. I'd like to bring us back to Resolution 107 of 2017 regarding the prelimi- preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment powers for 2017 street projects relating to Giles Street. Um, oh, motion by Alderperson Mieski, second by Alderperson Engelberger. Alderperson Mieski.
Call a question.
Okay, we'll vote by roll call. Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittleson?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Ten zero. Passes. That motion carries. Resolution one thousand, one thousand, Resolution 108 of 2017 comes from our Finance Committee.
Yeah, call a que- I, uh, call a question was voted.
Was to vote on it. I'm so sorry. Thank you. I was moving right on. I got the questions there, and I'm going, right? So back to our motion by Alderperson Mieski, second by Alderperson Engelberger. Um, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. Thank you, Alderperson Jensen. Now on to Resolution 108 of 2017 from our Finance Committee. Alderperson Mieski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance presents Resolution 108, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to authorize the use of twelve thousand dollars of contingency to fund the city attorney's continued work on the update of the City of Stotan Historic Preservation Ordinances with Landmark Commission. Finance Committee has voted unanimously to approve, and I so move.
So do.
Motion by Alderperson Mieski, second by Council President Swadley. Alderperson Mieski.
This is, um, an endeavor that was taken on by the Landmarks Commission at the request of, of council, and it is a continuation of, uh, that effort, and this would probably be all that is necessary to finish that endeavor.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Council President Swadley.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So, I've been trying to communicate, communicate all along. We're Attorney Dragny and the Landmarks, um, Peggy Bergen have been working on this. So hopefully it doesn't come as a surprise that we're about halfway or so through the updating the ordinance to make the ordinance consistent with the, uh, state statute. Um, in the finance packet, if you were to look there, there, there's always a summary of where we're at on contingency. Uh, we start out at eighty thousand every year. Uh, we had allocated eight thousand for the fireworks. Eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars to, for some insight consulting for the Public Works Building. We had...
No, I'm sorry. Insight consulting was the highway trailer analysis.
The highway trailer. Thank you. The highway trailer. Uh, we had fifteen thousand set aside for the, uh, for the hats, uh, for the matching or participation with the grant, which unfortunately we did not receive. So we would've been at eighty-eight thousand remaining. Um, so really, if we approve this, we'll be right at about fifty thousand, just over fifty thousand left out of the eighty. Um, so we're in no danger at this point of using all the contingency funds.
Thank you. Comments or questions? We'll vote by roll call. Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittleson?
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieski?
Aye.
Motion passes ten zero. Thank you. Resolution 110 of 2017 also comes from our Finance Committee. Alderperson Mieski.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance presents Resolution 110, 2017, approving a relocation plan and replacement housing payment computation relating to the acquisition of 2431 County Highway A to facilitate construction of a new Public Works facility. Finance approved, three to zero, and I so move.
Second.
A motion by Mieski, second by Alderperson Engelberger. Alderperson Mieski.
This is a... This is a relocation that is taking place due to our, our condemnation powers, and is required by law that we follow through with this in this manner, and I wholeheartedly approve of it because it does afford a compensation to the landowners for us inconveniencing them as far as taking their property.
Alder Person Borzma.
Thank you, Your Honor. And although I have always been consistent in not thinking that we should be spending this kind of money on a, a new facility, I will be supporting this because I think this is only right for us to do for the landowners.
Thank you. Further questions? We'll vote by roll.
Aye.
Swadley?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Trul?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Motion passes 10-0. Thank you. And next, if it is the council's... I can't, I can't think of a question I want to... If the council chooses to do so...
Prolegative.
I would enter... Pardon me?
Prolegative.
Prolegative. That's a good word. If it is the council's prerogative, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss Resolution 109 of 2017. Alder Person Jensen.
I read through it. I don't see any reason for us to go into closed session.
Right. Certainly. Resolution 109 of 2017 comes from our Personnel Committee. Alder Person Mieske.
Thank you, Your Honor. Personnel presents Resolution 109, 2017, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to approve the appointment and hiring of the City of Stoughton IT/Media Information Technology Director, salaried at $78,728. Personnel Committee met on July 10th and voted unanimously to approve an ISO move.
So, motion by Mieske, second by Engelberger. Alder Person Mieske.
This is to, to basically give our approval for the selection of a IT Information Technology Director. Unfortunately, we were not able to give you the information, we were not able to give you a full two weeks' notice on this due to the holiday. However, we did send out all the information prior to agenda, and hopefully, none of you have any problems with lack of information. I believe the candidate that we have, that has been selected is an excellent choice and will do us well.
Human Resources Director Gillingham and then Alder Person Engelberger.
The gentleman that we're looking at is John Montgomery, and he comes to us, all the information was sent out to you ahead of time, but just a quick summary. Comes to us with over 20 years' experience working at Women's International Pharmacy. He had a similar position to what we're looking for. He started the IT department there and continued to grow it within their organization. And if you approve this evening, we'll... We're a very good candidate. Went through the same process again with having the general panel meet with the candidate. Then, we brought in two experts and received a thumbs up from them as well, and then also met with leadership, and they were on board with, with the hiring. So, gentleman meets all of our criteria, has passed the background check, which is very thorough from our police department. And I received the approval as well for his physical and drug screen. So, we're at the point where we're looking for authorization from you to remove the contingencies from the offer.
Thank you. Alder Person Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was involved in the interview process, and I, I just think he's a very good candidate, and I would recommend approval.
We're hoping the third time's a charm.
Absolutely will be. Alder Person Borzma.
And we've had some discussion of this, this issue of bringing these kind of situations to the council and Personnel, and I think it's, I think we're trying to adhere to the issue of, especially if we have a director position, to bring it before the full council, and so, we're being consistent on that.
Thank you. Comments? Alder Person Kittleson.
Can we ask questions off what the resume was?
Should we be doing this in closed session? There was a decision by our council this evening not to move into closed. At any point, you can ask it to go into closed?
I think we should. I think, I just feel uncomfortable with talking about, and I don't even know if this person is out, that he's looking for another job, so I don't...
At any... The motion is on the agenda. If you'd like to read that motion, we may move into closed. Right before Agenda Item Number 11 is the...
It's three asterisks.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Sure, if you'd like to read that motion.
Oh, do you want me to read it? We're all waiting for your task.
I'm reading it to myself. Didn't I read it? I should have said out loud, please. I'm sorry.
Okay. The council may meet in closed session per state statute 19.851(c) and 19.851(b). Considering employment and compensation, the City of the Stoughton IT/Media Information Technology Director, the council may reconvene in open session to take action on matters just in closed session. Thank you.
And you so move.
And you so move.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, aye? Oh, I'm sorry. To go into closed session is a roll call.
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Mieske?
Aye.
Engelberger?
Aye.
Jensen?
Trul?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Kittleson?
Aye.
That motion carries. We'll move into closed. Resolution 109, 2017. Alder Person Mieske.
Won't be thanking you.
Motion, please.
I made the motion already.
You did make the motion already. Seconded by Engelberger.
Yep.
All right, then, thank you. It's, it's really late. So, there's been a motion by Alder Person Mieske, second by Alder Person Engelberger to approve Resolution 109, 2017. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.